All right, it is six o'clock. I'm gonna go ahead and call the DeKalb City Council regular meeting of December 11th to order. Roll call, please.
Sisada?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Nick Adams?
Here.
Verbit?
Walker?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Seven nine.
Awesome. And just so everyone knows, Alderman Verbit did reach out to me and let me know ahead of time that he was not gonna be able to make it tonight, which is always nice. With that, how about Captain Hy-Vee? You wanna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
You got it, sir.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Absolutely, Mr. Gentry. Have a great night, but thanks for leading us. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, approval of the agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So move.
Seconded by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Nick Adams?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven nine.
The agenda has been approved. Agenda Item D, presentations. We have a presentation, a transit update. So I assume it's gonna be, Zach is gonna lead this? Okay, all right. So our city engineer, Zach Gill. Appreciate it. And Mike, I assume you're gonna be in the background if we have any questions as well. Thank you.
And you have some packets here being more images.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as you last recall, we had our site selection, I think was the last activity that this body saw. We got in our transit center. We really want to accelerate this coming to fruition, so we decided to take a two-pronged approach that we're gonna actually prepare the site and see some actual construction work and off-site infrastructure improvements in this coming year, in 2024. Obviously, a building of that magnitude is probably gonna linger behind that, but look to be completed and open in 2025. So where we're at right now, and there's no real decisions or action or anything needed, just wanted to just have a fun, friendly update here for you and the community. Since we chose the site, we had what they call design charrette, and Stantec, our chosen consultant, came out, sat down with the transit team, and then myself as engineering, and looked at how best do we fit this facility on for what it needs and for how it can best benefit the surrounding neighborhood. So, very briefly here, so what you'll see there is kinda what we call a rendering, right? An architectural rendering. So this would be if you were on Dresser Road, and apparently really tall, but if you were on Dresser Road, looking to the north, slightly elevated. So what you see at the very kinda bottom middle, that would be where the employees would pull in. You see their parking lot. You can kinda see the nature and scope of the facility. The little gray shoeboxes there would represent the fleet of buses that are parked there with their kinda more intensive maintenance building behind it. So that just kinda gives you a feel of what impact it's just gonna have on the horizon, so to speak, of the area. If you flip to the next page, that's kinda your overhead view, more of an operational view of the circulation, how things are gonna work there. The blue line would represent kind of third-party, you know, delivering oil, you know, things like that. They also use that employee entrance, can circulate around internally and then exit again onto Dresser Road. Again, you see the parking lot there, the admin and ops, bus storage. The more important one is the red. That would be the buses themselves, so the fleet, how they utilize this facility. They would come off an improved intersection of Dresser and Normal. They would have a dedicated leg off of that intersection. They do, there are security mechanisms involved in this as well, so it's nice for them to have a dedicated area to enter and exit. They would circulate up through to the north. The first one you see there would be, I think they do some fueling area there. The thing labeled fueling is the actual tanks themselves, not the actual interface to fuel that's in that first kind of unnamed rectangle. They can proceed to the wash, proceed down then to the storage, and obviously access to maintenance where necessary. A neat aspect to this, the fueling with the tanks being located in that northwest there, we think there's an opportunity to actually put a cross-connect with piping, so it will go underneath the secured area of the maintenance facility, but allow us to have a secondary public works fueling station for our vehicles and fire department vehicles, police fleet of that nature. So that's a neat little bonus, particularly because we just have the one right now down off the market. So we're finding some neat ways to make this whole area work for us. And then the third and final one is a little bit more detail from the engineering standpoint that shows kind of our utilities and off-site improvements. I know one of the big concerns there is water, right? Stormwater. There's been different thoughts on what goes on over there. The main thing is that there is an undersized culvert right now that carries the stormwater back behind the school. As you can see there, you'll see 30-foot drainage easement. That's a whole new line. We're putting a brand-new, properly-sized line in there. That'll help the site's stormwater, once properly detained, to be released, as well as take on all the pass-through. And that's the problem we see on this site, is to the south, we're bringing in these neighboring properties' water, but we have nowhere to effectively and efficiently remove it from our site. That's why you see that a lot of buildup of stormwater, that ponding there. So we're gonna do it appropriately, capture it, control it, and then convey it on in an appropriate manner. Dresser Road will be widened. It'll be a three-lane section, so we'll have that kinda center turn lane in there. And then you'll approach the intersection at Dresser-Normal. That'll ultimately, it's consideration to have five legs. So we would have Normal itself to the south, and then the east and west leg of Dresser. Now ultimately, in the comprehensive plan and your previously done annexation agreement, it was called Iron Gate, I believe at the time. That is for a residential consideration, quite substantial one. I think it was, was it like maybe 800 homes? It was pretty significant. That would be kind of north of the high school. It has always been planned that they would have a primary access from there. So a potential immediately unbuilt, but potential for that other leg would then allow all those residents to access their homes. That's why we like keeping the bus traffic separated. We're not commingling now that rush hour, peak hour morning traffic with also trying to have city buses queued up, turning in, turning out, so on and so forth. So that's the broad overview. That's where we're at now.
Anything to add, Mike, or?
I think you did a great job.
Okay. So we have yet to find a flaw with our plan. So far, the site has delivered what we desired for the facility.
City manager.
Mayor, this was just a preview, a three-minute preview. And probably in 60 days, or sometime in February, the council will see a more detailed presentation, and we'll take some time then, we'll do a consideration, get your final direction.
Council, questions or comments?
Yes, Alderman Perkins.
So I've got a couple. So when you said Dresser Road is going to be redone, redone to Normal or all of Dresser?
It would be from Normal to any glidden. Yeah, so we'll have the width there, so that there'll be a turn lane available for those accessing the site. Not the people accessing Dresser or Normal, those using that middle, that kinda mid-block area, right? We can have deliveries that could be in fuel tankers, things of that nature. They'll want that middle turn lane, that left turn lane to wait there, so.
And then a second one, so the consideration is for a roundabout there at the end of Normal then as well, right?
Correct. So that intersection would require an upgrade, and again, we wanna have the five legs, so we're contemplating the roundabout there, where there'll be the three current active ones, our new bus one, and then our generous ability to put a fifth leg there.
Okay, great. Looks good.
I think roundabout has become a bad term, so now they call it, would you say improved intersection? Is that a new term?
Intersection improvement, yeah.
Intersection improvement, yes.
Which could be any number of things. I mean, intersection improvement could be anything, yeah.
Yes. Alderman Larson.
So for this newer improved roundabout, will it be similar to one that's at Normal and that we're doing down at NIU that'll have crosswalks? Because they'll be high school students at this.
Yes. Yeah, so that is also one of the benefits of this too, because right now, the pedestrian infrastructure there is a bit, I guess, sketchy would be the engineering term, there's not a lot there. So yes, it would be meant to host significant pedestrian traffic, and we are even still scheming on ways to potentially do some grade separation and really even remove that conflict point for a couple of those different crossing patterns, so.
And will we have that, to Alderman Larson's point, that center area where they could stage before they cross the intersection of traffic? That's great, yeah. Just like we have on Lucinda.
Yep, yep. So a lot of Y generous splitter islands that allow for a much secure crossing there.
That's great. Alderman, Mrs. Sada?
Yes, thanks. So, just to be clear, where is this? I'm trying to see the boundary on the right side here. And so I'm imagining, imagining we keep our, do we keep our trees in our path with this, or?
Yes, yeah, great question. So some of these squiggly lines are kinda tough to make out, but if you see the ones that kinda look like a little bump there that are running vertically, that is the tree line. The lighter shaded gray that you see running north, it appears to be running north from, you know, the end of the bus traffic lane, but it really remains connected to the existing path. It runs up, and yes, we're gonna keep the tree line there, and then we reconnect up to the existing path that goes through the conservation area to the north. The intent of that area there, from the Iron Gate plans, was to be dedicated right away and also be dedicated as parkland. So we thought we kinda have a neat opportunity here with that fifth potential leg will really hug east as far as we can, and then we can actually put our parkland, so it blends into the existing tree line and the path. So it'd make a nice area for people, particularly when that's a residential area north, if it ever is, we'll have a nice park there. So yes, we'll keep a majority of the tree line.
Lovely.
The other thing, and I know I've said this every time this topic has come up, but I wanna
be really clear about it. When I think transit center, the first thing that comes to my mind, I can smell it, and I can taste it. And so I know that the residents, I know there are only a few, but the residents in the nearest houses are really going to prefer to not smell it, and I know I've talked with our transit manager as well about hybrid buses, and how significantly different just a hybrid bus can smell. So I don't know where we're at with that.
That I'll let Mike speak to, but I can tell you from a buffering standpoint, there is no residential of consequence to directly to the west, right? I mean, we own that. It's a water tower and a fire station, sorry, guys, so they can smell it. Now, and then going to the east, we're gonna have the tree line and that parkland before you get to some lower density residential. And again, going north, there's a conservation area which will never be touched, so we're not doing the way across the street, there's, you know, 30 homes, and we're putting this right there and blowing the fumes at it. We have a little bit of buffer, we feel, but if you wanna speak more to?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanna add too, kids are walking by this, our firefighters are breathing it, it's significant, so.
Well, the first thing I would just state is that you'll see on this circulation map, you'll see we actually have a charging infrastructure.
Cool.
And so that is taking into account plans for electric in the future. The other thing is that as we're looking at a bus procurement in the future as hybrids, one of the challenges we're running up against, of course, is cost. Electric is double the cost of a regular diesel. Hybrid will be about one-half of what a diesel is, and so you're talking about 600,000 to 900,000 to 1.2, 1.3 mil. So there is a cost that we have to take into account with that element, but that is in our plans for the future. The other element, I'll just add with diesel and fumes and that kinda thing, is that really we're only running, we say that we have got 50 vehicles that we run out of there, but it's not 50 vehicles all going out all the time. They leave, we're really staging about 12 to 13 buses at peak in the morning between seven and eight going out. So it's not like you really have like all these vehicles that are starting off all at once. So it's, if you went down to Pleasant Street where they're at currently, which is an industrial area, but it's not like you've got like all these diesel fumes and, you know, a truckyard, that kinda thing. It's not quite the level that, you know, you would think. So that helps to mitigate that staging when buses are going out.
And what do we think, sorry, not so much transit anymore, but what do we think it's gonna look like from Dresser Road?
So the very first one, that colored rendering, will give you sort of a feel. So they'll definitely be, the stormwater retention will be there. You'll have basically what'll just look like your standard kind of commercial parking lot up front, and then that is kind of a one-story, is that potentially two stories for that rear building? So that would be the most you see. Again, the building isn't enormous by any means, it's more of an administrative area. And then when you see in the back, the larger one, that's the bus garage, so to speak, so you're talking about being, you know, several hundred feet back from Dresser Road with other things shielding it. So it's not intended to be a monstrosity right there at the curb line by any means.
Yeah, I mean, I think since, you know, it is all green space right now, it would be lovely if we could, you know, make it, make a tree line or something in front of the parking lot, so that we're maintaining some of this green space, trying to keep it cool and such.
I imagine it would be designed to our current UDO standards, which we would have landscaping requirements, whether it's a berm or some intermittent shrubbery and trees across the front like any other new development in town, so we would have total authority over that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Thanks. Appreciate you, Zach, you and Mike. All right, moving on to Agenda Item E, public participation. We have none. Agenda Item F, appointments, we have none. And then Agenda Item G, consent agenda. Number one, minutes of the special joint meeting of the City Council and Finance Advisory Committee of November 20th, 2023. Two, minutes of the regular City Council meeting of November 27th, 2023. Three, accounts payable and payroll through December 11th, 2023 in the amount of $5,670,553.67. Four, investment and bank balance summary through October 2023. Five, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through October 2023. Six, Crime Free Housing Bureau report, November 2023. Seven, approval of the 2024 schedule of meetings. Eight, Resolution 2023-116 approving the cancellation of the December 26th, 2023 regular meeting of the City Council and approving the payment of invoices for the second part of December prior to the January 8th, 2024 regular meeting of City Council. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Larson. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Nick Adams?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven nine.
Consent agenda has been approved, and it's sure nice not to have a meeting December 26th. All right, Agenda Item H, public hearings. We have none. I, considerations, we have none. Agenda Item J, resolutions, Resolution 2023-117 authorizing an agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, IAFF, Local 1236, for the period beginning January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2027. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Walker. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a considerable amount of background in your agenda for tonight. I'm gonna summarize that, but I wanna cover all the essential points, so bear with me. As I mentioned in my background, the, some of the key features of the contract, which is before you tonight, have been on the table informally between the city representatives and representatives of Local 1236 since the spring. And the council's well aware of the process by which we came to a decision just in the last six months to build a fourth fire station, and before we could get to that, we had to talk about what was really driving that decision, which is response time. And then it's nice to think about building a station, but you have to staff the station. As we started talking about the staffing of the station, then we got into looking at what the people who would be working in that station would be making, and across the whole gamut of the fire department's various positions. And so this has not been, we haven't sort of stumbled into this conversation, and I will point out that currently, there is a contract in place that expires at the end of December next year. But in considering where we want to be in the next four years, we looked at incorporating some pieces of that into a new framework, which would be a four-year agreement that includes the first year of, the first year would be the fourth year of the current agreement, and then takes us through 2027. So as I point out at the very top, and we've been talking about this in some of the meetings the council's had about the budget, there were two main fiscal concerns that both parties had to talk about. And one of those was how and when would the department transition from the initial staffing? We had talked about the jump station approach with the new station to the NFPA standard, which the current contract was going to get us to in terms of shift strength and so forth at the end of next year. And then the other piece was, and maybe in our first part of the conversation in the spring and into the summer, we weren't focused on this, but we came focused on this, and that is, where do we stand in relation to our comparables in terms of the positions that are represented by the contract? So I've broken down my background into two pieces. One was the minimum staffing fiscal impact, and then the other was the impact of trying to bring our firefighter wage compensation and benefits up to at least the midpoint of where we stand with our comparable. So let me just walk through that real quickly, and I'm happy to stop and answer any questions you may have along the way if the chief wants to add. He's certainly welcome to do so. So I mentioned the collective bargaining agreement, which is currently in place. We were striving in the current agreement to get to a minimum shift level, staffing level of 16 firefighter paramedics and officers by the end of October of next year. The initial staffing that we had proposed for Station 4 ironically worked against that. We were trying to find a way collectively, all of us, members of Local 1236 and the city administration and the council, to do this in a gradual way, to try to stay, to live within our means, but to push ourselves to gradually attain a higher standard. And so that duration of that temporary arrangement, the jump station, the minimum station staffing of three, was always negotiable. And this gets to one point I wanna, I've made in the background a number of places, and I'll make it verbally. We have had a unique relationship between the city and our bargaining groups, and we're proud of that, and I think it has worked for both parties, and in this case especially. In looking at how to get to the minimum five, because that's our standard now, and that's the NFPA standard too, it's not a unique DeKalb standard, how do we get to that? We wrestled with a number of variables and also options. Here is what's in the contract before you tonight. In order to get the Station 4 open, we need a minimum hiring of nine firefighter paramedics, and that's with three shifts, three persons a shift. How do we grow into, in a gradual way, into the five minimum that we've established across the other fire stations and for our city? So what we looked at is that initial nine firefighters at Station 4, three, that would be a hiring that would take place in the last quarter of '24. The station's supposed to be open in hopefully February-ish in '25, so we'd have to have the people in place to be able to open the station. Another three firefighter paramedics in '25, another three in '26, and another three in '27. So that is how we meet the, according to what's proposed to you tonight, that's how we meet the minimum staffing requirement, and then grow over four years into the minimum that we've already established with the other stations, okay? Still with me, any questions so far? All right. What are we gonna pay folks? What is the standard we're gonna use? Well, in negotiating, it's common, it's, I think, appropriate, but both parties want to, before you get too far into talking about a potential contract, you wanna find out on the economic side, what is the, what are the standards, what are the comparables that we're looking at? DeKalb is unique in a lot of respects. We don't have a bed-sink comparable anywhere, but we had to pick out some. So we have about 10, and those were established by an arbitrator before the contract that ran from 17 through 20, or through 20, yes. And we kept that same list of comparables for the current contract, and we're proposing to, both parties agree that we should keep those going forward. Why? Frankly, it's closer to where we are frankly operating now. We had other comparables that we used for the FOP negotiations, but it doesn't make your cost any less if we were going that way. What's important, though, is for consistency's sake, so we can compare and contrast going back and forth. So where do we stand in relation to those comps? I've got some telling charts for you in your background on pages four and five. Frankly, as we stand right now in 2023, we've done the research, and our research matched the research of Local 1236, we are ninth of 10, the very, almost the very bottom. And in fact, about halfway through the wage steps, if you're in that, in those wage steps, you might be falling as much as 10 on average now. This isn't the highest, almost $10,000 behind your comps in the average cities that we've compiled for you. 2024 doesn't look much better, although there are a few contracts that are still open, so we didn't get all 10, but we got eight of them, and we don't gain any ground. Even if we stayed with the 2.5% that we had talked about in 2024 in the current contract, we don't gain any ground there. We're seventh of eight as opposed to ninth of 10. So what did we need to do? This wasn't a case of the city representative sitting down and saying, "We feel this is good for you, let's go this way." We all agreed in the beginning, we're gonna let the numbers lead us in a lot of respects, and to the extent that we could, and within the parameters that our constituents, council has laid out in the past for the budget, which is still something that gets voted on finally tonight, where can we be, where can we live? And the most important thing being that we're able to grow that new fire station and have a level of staffing that is compatible with what we say our response time needs to be, and our ability to go on multiple calls and so forth. I'm running through this, but. And how do we get to that? Well, the relationship that was struck back in 2019 into 2020 has continued strong today, and that is built around a collaboration approach, an interspace approach. I have to tell you, when, in the darkest period of March 2020, a meeting was convened with all of the bargaining groups and also the city department heads to talk about what we were gonna do, this is when basically there were government-imposed constraints on commerce for our city and everywhere across the state, and probably everywhere in the United States. And what impact would that be? We didn't know. But where would we begin? Were we gonna open up the contracts? What were we gonna do? Local 1236's representatives stood up and said, "Well, we're just gonna have to freeze, we're just not gonna accept an increase for the year. Let's start with that and see where we're gonna go." And not only that, but they went further. When it came to the end of the year, and things were not looking great, there were still no, there weren't any vaccinations on the market yet even at the end of December on, or at least not for most people, at the end of December 2020 when we sealed the last contract, this current contract, they said, "Well, let's go another year." So for two straight years, the local put aside any pay increases. Now, that didn't help with the comparables, but they said, "We've got bigger things to do here. We're trying to meet the demands that are here," and demands were increasing dramatically because of COVID. And we're also trying to grow in a responsible way to a larger capacity to serve the public in terms of the four stations. So here's what's on the table for you tonight. 2024, where we're gonna be hiring nine more people at the end of the year, the thought was, that's a pretty low, pretty heavy, you know, it's a big load fiscally to take on. So in 2024, keep the 2.5% increase that was in the contract, current contract. 2025, when the new station opens, we make a move to bring the pay scales of our firefighter paramedics, tenants, and owners up to the midpoint, close to the midpoint, close to the midpoint. It depends where you are in the step schedules, a little bit up, a little bit below, but basically that's the average. And that requires restoring that 5% that had been given up voluntarily by the union, and also an equity increase to get us to the midpoint. In '26 and '27, a contract increase of 2.5% in each of those years. But overall, that's a pretty big package, but where we are in terms of where we want to be in a new station and But where we are in terms of of where we want to be, a new station, and then the ability to have all stations operating with the same basic shift strength, we will have met those two significant milestones. So I mean, frankly, we didn't go very far afield. There's a little bit of wordsmithing, nothing significant in terms of of the rest of the contract, except the diameter for the residency was increased to the forty miles that is also in the FOP contract we just approved. This, this, I think, is a milestone in a legacy contract. I think it gets us to a point where we've been, which people have been on the administrative side, and in the in the local also have been talking about since the nineties. And it doesn't mean that that solves all our problems. We we have problems arise every day, every year, that we don't anticipate. But we're going to be able to meet what we understand to be the demands on us, which continue to grow in terms of calls and so forth. And I I'm I'm proud of the collaboration that has brought this to you tonight. I'm very proud to be presenting this to you as as a package, which I think we can digest and live with fiscally, and I welcome your your comments and questions.
Counsel. Alderman Walker?
Well, I will say one thing. When I was running, you know, there were so many things that I was naive about when it came to, you know, firefighters. First of all, I almost had to recuse myself from this because Noah Millard's daughter's volleyball team always cheats the calb, so. I was going back and forth on what I was. I was going back and forth. But, you know, I got to meet, you know, Ms. Millard and talk a little bit about some of the things that I was naive about. And, you know, I'm a selfish person at the end of the day. I know I am. My kids and wife tell me that. But the one thing that I have great gratitude with you firefighters is the job that you guys do. You know, I'm a twenty-six veteran of UPS, and I see you guys out there all the time working, and not just putting out fires, you know, I see you guys deal with some of the crazy things that go on in the AGN area. I see you guys over on Fourteenth Street talking to, you know, people with mental health issues, and I just observe a lot of things. So the one thing, you know, when I ran for alderman, I wanted to learn a lot about everybody's job that, you know, made sense to me. And I have nothing but respect for you guys, for the job that you do, and for what went on during COVID, for you guys to stand up for the city the way you guys did. Not many people know about that. I didn't know about that. But for you guys to do that for us during the hardest time of a lot of people's lives, I have nothing but thanks and gratitude. And honestly, I can't believe that you guys were ever paid this low, and honestly, I'm making trouble for Mr. Nicholas on this one, but I think you guys deserve a lot more than what you're going to get. So my hat's off to you guys. And I strongly support this. Good job, city manager. Good job.
Counsel. Alderman Zaza?
I'll just echo my thanks for your sacrifice, your constant sacrifice, and your commitment to our community. Thank you.
Other council members? Yeah, I mean, I'm, Alderman Smith, go ahead.
Sorry, I just popped in my head. Bill, how about the hiring pool? Do you think it'll increase? I mean, how is our hiring pool at the moment?
Yeah, well, it's a good question, and Michelle Anderson's in the back of the room can help you with that.
Oh, I saw her.
But, yeah, but we're, I I think this will help. People who are looking to get in the career do it for lots of reasons, and I don't meet people who say, yeah, I just want to do it for the money. I want to do it because I have, I feel it's a calling, I want to, I want to serve. But it's nice to know that you're going to make something. And if you, and you do a little bit of homework, and the numbers are out there, and other people talk about it, and other communities and so forth, then I I think it helps us to recruit, to have a package like this, and and moving forward, it looks like we're, you know, it's, it's not all at once, but it's, it makes sense. There's going to be enough people around you to help on a on a fire scene or on an emergency call, and and you'll be able to plan to be here. So you won't be shopping, be here for a while, and then look at, you know, receive something that looks a little bit better somewhere else.
Thank you.
Alderman Perkins?
I'll up with the same. Last week, I was lucky enough to spend some time with the fire department. Thanks, chief. Thanks to Jason Pavlak, who spent some time with me, and all the folks there. You know, they're worth every penny, very supportive of it.
Any others?
For me, I just want to say thanks for letting Bill and I, you know, roll into each fire station and say happy Thanksgiving to y'all. I know that might have been a little bit of a surprise, and I didn't mean to interrupt some of those dinners, or naps, or or movies you all were watching. But it was really cool to be able to make the rounds and see all of you. I I'm particularly excited about the fire station, just, I know this really helps with future capacity. We've got a lot going on here in the city decalb, and now to be a little bit ahead of the game when it comes to our our EMTs and our firefighters, I think is just fantastic. But probably what excites me the most about it is just bringing equity to the rest of our community. Someone dials nine-one-one, we have a high probability of having the same response time no matter where someone is in the city decalb. And and that that particular means a lot to me. I do want to highlight the collaboration that Bill mentioned. You know, to go through a contract where you have two people on either side of the the table, it can go a lot of different ways. But when you enter into those conversations with an abundance of trust, and an abundance of, look, we want to do what's in the best interest of those we represent, as well as those we represent, when you can actually have that kind of a dialogue and that kind of collabora- collaboration, it's, it says a lot about your organization, and it says a lot about our our organization as well. So Noah Millard, you've been great. I really can't say enough how much I appreciate the role that you've been in. I heard about you even before I became mayor, and as I've been mayor, seeing how you have represented yourself and and your brothers and sisters is is commendable, man. So, great job. You're going to be missed in the role that you have going forward, but I'm sure you're going to help coach and mentor the next generation negotiators that come forward. But overall, congrats, guys. This is a milestone for the decalb fire department. I mean, a fourth fire station coming online, and we're going to have a lot of amazing firefighters that are going to back it, that are going to serve, and going to do incredible things in our community. So really proud to to know all of you, really proud to greet the next generation, and this is a significant milestone for the city decalb. So thank you all. And with that, we're going to call roll and approve it, and after that, you're more than welcome to go on about your evening. Since there's no other questions or comments, oh, here we go. Alderman Smith?
Just curious on the update on some of the equipment we got ordered for them. Would that be possible, or?
Yeah, well, not for lack of wanting that equipment here, but we've got a couple of ambulances that we're we're waiting for as a supply problem. And and then the the truck that we're hoping to get next year, we're still thinking, and they're committed to get it to us by the end of the year, so.
Great. Thank you very much. And for next year.
Do you, would you like me to call roll now, Alderman Smith? All right, just making sure. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zaza?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes. Resolution two zero two-three dash one-one-seven passes. Thanks for coming out, everybody. All right. Absolutely, absolutely. All right, moving on to agenda item K, ordinances, second reading. Number one, ordinance two zero two-three dash zero-five-four, adopting the city decalb annual budget and non-bargaining unit pay plan for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
Thank you, mayor. This was, as the mayor pointed out, this is something we've talked about for a while now. You proved this on first reading only at the last regular meeting. The budget document is a very transparent document, it's been talked about since, in conceptual ways, since late July, early August, and here we are, it's mid-December. The detail is significant, but I think the most important part of it is that if somebody knows nothing about city government and wants to know what priorities have been and what they might be, you can pick this up, you don't have to get bogged down in the numbers. A lot of good pictures, a lot of stories told, and I think it well represents what people expect of their city government, so leave it at that.
Counsel, questions or comments?
You are absolutely right. That the first year I read our budget, it told the story. You don't see that very often in a lot of municipal or even governmental entities, so really appreciate that city staff. All right, hearing no other comments or questions, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zaza?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes. Ordnance two zero two-three dash zero-five-four passed on second reading. Moving on to agenda item L, ordinances, first reading. One, ordinance two zero two-three dash zero-five-six, opting out of the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Walker. City manager.
Thank you, mayor. The the background is, I think, pretty substantial, and I'll just buzz right through this. The state legislature, without a lot of hoopla, not a lot of publicity through the whole process, passed at the end of the session, the veto session, the Paid Leave for All Workers Act. And the intention was good. Intention was to find a way to put a certain floor underneath the benefits that might go to all workers, which is full-time and part-time, but it also includes not just public sector workers, but also private sector workers. And I don't know how many businesses in in the state were participating in this, but they will soon know about it, I suspect. The act significantly leaves up to interpretation, we feel, where those provisions can be considered on top of already negotiated benefits or in place of. Now, there are probably some public, and maybe a lot of private entities that don't have a basic package in terms of leave. We have a substantial package, and we just approved a collective bargaining agreement, which would be an example of that. There's sick leave, there's there's vacation leave, there's personal days, there's Kelly days, so forth. So our concern was, because there's this open door to this interpretation, what if a couple of years down the road, somebody comes in and says, well, in addition to all these other things, a hundred and twenty hours of this, and so many days of that, I get another forty hours on top of that? Sounds implausible, maybe? Very possible, in our opinion. And so we, the city has, through its home rule powers, the ability to opt out of this act if we do so by before January first, in which case it falls on all home rule communities. There was an attempt by the municipal league to remove home rule communities, because as as I was pointing out, most have a substantial portfolio of of paid leave and policies supporting them. But that wasn't successful. School districts and park districts are exempted, though. But all other, this is all private and public entities in the state, other than those explicitly exempted, unless they opt out by the end of the year, are included in this. So we, there wasn't a lot of preparation for this. We might have put this up in October if we knew it was coming. I didn't know it was about it until a couple of weeks ago, and thanks to our city attorney for making it known. And so we recommend that you approve this on both second, first and second reading tonight, because we're not going to have another meeting this month.
So I'm here.
It does, oh, but I just want to make this very clear. It does not preclude you from continuing to discuss leave with with our various groups, whether it's bargaining groups, management group, and so forth, and extending those. It doesn't prohibit any of that at all under our home rule powers, but it does mean that we don't have an arbitrary piece on top that we already provide many times over.
Counsel, questions or comments? Alderman Smith, yes.
Man, have rules been issued on this yet?
The Illinois Department of Labor has not issued the rules yet. They've actually just had their first hearings. They have their preliminary rules that are out, and they just had a, had a hearing where the IML did appear and the Chamber of Commerce appeared and made some comments.
The predicament is, guess what? January one is just a couple of weeks away. So they could have their hearings, and they're going to take a break for the holidays, and then we're in mid-January and to pick it up again, and you're done.
Yeah, and then what I should say is, those hearings are not legislative, they're administrative about rules, about how to interpret what the act is.
Sorry, I should have mentioned that. Yeah, I've sat through three of those, and I'm way confused. So.
Yes.
We have a hundred and one employees, so. Yeah, it's, okay. I'm good, I'm done.
Any other comments or questions, counsel?
Thank you.
Alderman Zaza?
So, yeah, this is kind of out of nowhere, and, you know, I just can't help but lean on the side of more leave for for workers. I think that as as society is evolving, it feels like workers are looking for more and more time off, and it adds to our competitiveness. And I can see us embracing this alongside what we already offer. And, I mean, you know, we always have people like yourself who may not take any vacation days anyway, because it's so hard to find the time to do it and still keep up with your work. But so I guess, like, my natural inclination is just leaning in favor of it, because I feel like it's good for people. I don't know.
You want to clarify why we're opting out here?
Well, because this, this would be on top of, so this is, would be like a minimum. We haven't had, we've had more than this minimum probably for sixty, seventy years.
So we exceed these standards already?
We bargained this collectively. We wouldn't want to go back to this. This would be, everybody would see a reduction in their paid leave. And insofar as in increasing it, you know, it's not as specific as to what it means, whether it's paid leave for sickness or for vacation or what it is. And and in talking to our our bargaining groups who we invited, you know, I I was uncomfortable at first. I thought, well, I don't want them to think that we're, we're looking to go backwards in terms of, you know, labor management relations and so forth. So we talked about it, and what I found is, one of the reasons why I'm recommending that you do this tonight is that there, they were, some of them were kind of caught unawares too. They knew, but they didn't, they hadn't arrived yet in terms of a statewide organizational position on language that would just be imported into the various collective bargaining agreements. We'll get to that, and we're be happy to do that, when it's very clear that it's just going to be, if you have it, great, and keep going, but you don't, you don't stop and go backwards with this. So I I feel comfortable in terms of our own employee base, that they they understand that we're not trying to take anything away, we're just wanting to make sure that it doesn't disrupt already collectively bargained agreements.
Which meet or exceed?
Yeah.
The requirements that the state's putting forward, yep. Alderman McAdams?
I'm going to be a no vote on this one. I'm normally a go-along guy, and I think the home rule is fantastic, but the legislature and the governor are on board, and I went to look, and the supermajority in Springfield voted for it, including some Republicans. I'm not willing to go up against that. I think our workers deserve whatever they can get their hands on, so I'm going to vote no.
Alderman Larson?
If I read you right, I think I'm going to vote yes, because I think, in a way, we're saying the state doesn't have all their ducks clearly in a row for us to maybe be on board with this or not. And so for right now to say, let's see exactly what this is, and then maybe that will work for the city, but right now with everything we have in line is much more than this is. And if something changes or gets clarification in a way that we're not anticipating, by being out of it for this, because just because we vote out of it now doesn't mean that in the future we couldn't be part of it.
And I realize you're only, I have only thought about this for a couple of weeks, you're thinking about it for a couple of hours. But here's, here's a couple of other things to consider. This applies to private and public. There was no state dollars thrown into this to help people. So just take the downtown, for instance. So they're subject to this, and are they going to be even more required because the city, the city which has that corporate responsibility, has defined this as a new law of the local domain? So people will then say, well, I, you know, I'm a part-time person, only working ten hours, part-time, just to make some extra cash at a downtown store, I get forty hours of paid paid leave. I don't know. Is that typical? Maybe, maybe not. Or it could be somebody's working thirty hours and they don't get any paid leave. So I get So I get that, but we haven't even had that conversation with our, with our private employers around here. And so we're, I, I feel a little uncomfortable with us doing it without having that kind of community discussion. Because what's being asked here, it's a little bit of social engineering here, isn't it? I mean, I, I don't, I don't remember any public hearings on this across the state. I don't remember any, you know, back and forth that usually happens when these types of sweeping changes are being proposed by a legislature. So I understand how it got passed, but I, I think there's some, there's some inequities here to start with, and we're not going to solve them by going along with this, I don't think.
Well, and, and just to wrap up, that I agree that we try very hard to, what do I want to say? I mean, we, we try to pay all of our employees, you know, and, and the benefits they have. And I kind of like the home rule of that, that we can, like the firefighters, what they did for us a few years ago, then we can turn around and do something. And I don't know that, I'm sure there's places that might need this, because they're out of whack, but I just don't think DeKalb is, and, and I would like to opt out of it and let us still be in charge.
Alderman Perkins?
So, so how many employees do we have, ballpark?
200, and if I can tell you exactly.
So, so. 200 and some.
Yeah. What I'm going at is, so of the 200, we have probably 150 that are covered by some type of negotiated agreement.
More than that.
So, and in that agreement, their PTO is already covered. So really, what's left that isn't covered by some PTO program?
Yeah, we've got 243 full-time equivalents, which includes some part-timers. The part-time portion of our workforce has been going down for the last five, six years. We were at, say, 45, three and a half years ago. We're at 28 now.
Do, do the part-timers have any PTO right now?
They don't have paid time off, because some of them are working, like, seasonal work in the summertime, you know, picking up downtown, doing some things like that. They have workers' comp and, and the like, but not paid time off, because they might work only some, say, five, six, 10 hours a week. So, you'd be giving them a month off, and they only work two and a half months, so it, that doesn't seem like the system.
It's, it's an hour per 40 hours worked. So, so you really wouldn't be granting them 40 hours. They would work the 40 hours and then get an hour.
Well, see, but there's no framework even for negotiating that, you know what I mean? I, you just come in, your boss in the morning and say, "There's no framework for that. I, I'm just going to take a few hours off", and the state says, "I can do that".
And I guess, but where I'm, where I'm going at that is, is we have this population. The state has said, all right, the elected officials of the state have said, "People deserve some PTO", and if we opt out, we're going to, we're effectively saying to the part-timers, "Because we're home rule, you're not going to get any PTO, even though the state says you deserve it". You know what I'm saying? So I guess what I'm wondering is, is there a way of reconsidering what we have in place for our part-timers to align them with this? Because if we do that, where I'm going with that is, if we do that, then our population all has some type of PTO that is at a minimum of what the state is saying, and in 80, 90% of the cases, above that.
Yeah, normally, we would have had a couple of months at least, six months, you know, or this would have been something that would have been forecast, and we'd have six months to, to give you a nice background piece on what the cost might be, what the benefit might be, how it might help us get better part-time employees and so forth. We haven't had time to do any of that stuff.
Right.
It was veto sessions, and it, you know, I, we weren't down there, so I don't know when it was called up and how many hours there were to even discuss it. So, so we're, yeah, the way we can get to what you're saying, really, is just to not pass this. And then it's, the full weight of that, we'll have to figure out on the fly after January 1st.
But then, but then if we don't pass this, does this additional PTO get layered on top of the already negotiated agreement with the rhetoric?
See, not necessarily, but there's a possibility, first thing to say.
Yeah, it could be a subject of negotiation.
Yeah.
And I can tell you from, from my experience representing other public bodies, that, that their collective bargaining units are already saying that it's on top of their, their paid time off, you know, which is, you know, an understandable negotiating position that they're going to take.
Sure.
So this, I, we don't know the financial impact of complying with this will be on our part-timers, and that's, and allowing us to opt out gives us that time and space, as we were just discussing, to kind of evaluate what the financial impact will be, whether we can afford it and the budget, and what type of negotiations we want to make with our part-timers in order to be competitive.
So, I mean, we were going to go, we were talking about the budget earlier, and, and want to look at how that impact would be, but when you're in a public state, particularly if you're a city, you can't take a day off of providing emergency services, security, street repairs, things like that. So usually, paid time off requires some overtime somewhere, right? You got to, you got to work a little longer, or you bring somebody back in off of on-call or something like that. So, we do that all the time. We do it now. And we honor paid time off, so that people can get rest that they need and be with family as they'd like to be and so forth. But none of that's been factored in here. This is just a big question mark, and that's why I brought it to you tonight. I, I am not comfortable or uncomfortable with this, but I, I don't, I would say, when there's so many ifs and so many questions that were probably not intended, but that's the impact here. I'd rather not touch it, and we can come back to it, I suppose. We could come back and, we wanted to do this, and then take whatever comes with it. We could do it later, but right now is the only chance we can get to not go along with it until we know more about it.
So I'm making, so I'm making sure I'm following the conversation, too, and with what Alderman Perkins just said. Ultimately, if we adopted this, then we do have a lot of collective bargaining units that you already said, see this as an additional on top of the benefits that they already have, which would be a significant impact financially to the city of DeKalb. But we do have a part-time population out there that, if we opt out of this, would not receive the benefit of it. But we could have a conversation about, does the city of DeKalb want to adopt PTO policy that matches the state for our part-timers?
Correct.
Right, exactly. Without subjecting ourselves to the potential additional burden of this with all of our collective bargaining units, okay. Alderman McAdams, I think you had your hand up, or no? Okay, all right. Other comments or questions?
So I like that. I'm supportive of what the mayor discussed.
Alderman Larson?
And, and one other question, I'm not sure who I should direct it to, but they get to use, employees get to use this paid time off before anything else. Do we have, like, bankable hours that people can, so basically, they could take these first 40 that they earn and then not take vacation time, because they're using that, and then, because like, not at our farm. If you, because Harvest has been busy, you can't have the time off, because we're, and you didn't use your vacation, we pay you for it. That's just our policy. And so with, you know, if you gave them this, then they'd do the 40, and then they'd still have three weeks, maybe they've gone years.
We do that with our full-time paid employees. We, there are, well, just, at the end of the year, we're going through this right now, people request and say, "We know, because of what we required of them, that they can't get all their time off. There's just no way, emergency calls, particularly all that, fill-ins for people who've been sick". So, we usually pay up to 40 hours by the end of the year, and then we give them a period, right now it's to the middle of 2024, to, to work down, you know, in cooperation with the management that's there, days off.
So this could be another 40 hours.
So they can get down somewhere in the, in the vicinity of where their normal load is. And we do that all the time. This would be, you know, I think we could be creative, rather than on the fly here. We can be more creative if we have more time to look at this and think about it, and what a good framework would be for doing all that.
Then, to, to answer your question, too, Alderman Larson, there is, the act right now, you would allow, you could pass a policy that says that you have to use your other forms of leave before availing yourself of the Paid Leave for All Workers Act leave, but you have to have that policy in effect before the end of this year. If you don't do that, then you can't require them to do that under the, under the existing law. So the law is more expansive, you know, in that regard than most paid leave policies are. And then, you know, that, so if you don't have that policy in place, it would allow an employer to take, or I'm sorry, an employee to take whatever leave that they've accrued at any time. They don't have to exhaust the other ones. They don't have to give you a reason for why they're doing it, and they can spring it upon you, you know, at the time, and then you, as the employer, then, especially the municipal employer, has to adjust and provide those types of, you know, services.
Mayor, maybe what the counsel could do, or you could motion to do this, is, my, my recommendation to you would be to approve this, but on the condition that the city manager brings back to you in the next 60 days some analysis of where we are with our part-time pay and.
I disagree. I don't, I don't know why we'd want to approve it, when we can do the exact same thing, but the opposite.
I was just throwing this out to you.
Because for me, I mean, when, and I appreciate what you were saying, Alderman McAdams, the governor and the supermajority and all that, but school districts got left out, park districts got left out. Why is that? So here's government agencies that lobbied and got left out of the law, because why? I mean, to me, if you're going to, if Springfield's going to pass legislation, and they're going to target the private sector, they need to target the private sector and the public sector equally. To actually carve out, well, this applies to everyone, but, well, you know, you guys over here and you guys over there, irritates the hell out of me. And then the fact that this is another unfunded mandate from the state, that they're putting this on us, essentially, I don't appreciate. Now, I know there are employers out there that I'm sure take advantage of their workers, and I understand the spirit behind this thing, but, but it just seems a little disingenuous to me on, if the spirits acts, then why isn't it applying to everyone? Where we're actually saying, or the law is saying, school districts and park districts, your employees, oh yeah, they don't, they don't matter. And that, that to me is one thing that I have not appreciated about this particular piece of legislation. You're telling us right now that it could affect the collective bargaining agreements that we have before us. We're talking about a handful, not a handful, that's, that's incorrect, a percentage of our employee population that this could benefit them, when we could easily pass legislation and ordinance to be able to take care of them, be completely in compliance with the state law, and not affect our collective bargaining units, where we already meet or exceed the requirements of the state. I'd rather go that route myself. Alderman, Alderman Zaza?
So, one question I have, and I realize how ambiguous and unclear this whole thing is. One question I have is, it sounded like you suggested that, as we do it as a city, it seems like that also determines it for private businesses as well.
Not determining, but it could be suggestive if somebody could, if, if you're a, a person who's advocating for yourself and people that are working in a private entity, for instance, you say, "Well, the city just, just said, you know, we can do this, so we can do it". And you got to argue that point, you know, it's, we don't operate in a vacuum. We work in a community, and, and we, we shine a light, we, we lead the way. So, it would be pretty easy to just fall in on that.
So, I can, I can also see how it's prudent to, prudent to pass this today and erring on the side of caution, because we don't know how it's going to impact our community. And I like the idea that you bring it back, bring back some alternative ideas related to this to make sure that we're respecting the intentions.
Why not just not pass it, and then we review it later? I mean, we're, we're, you're offering that we pass something that we have ambiguity around. We don't all exactly agree with it.
But we're, we're agreeing to opt out.
Oh, is that what you were saying? Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
We're all agreeing to opt out.
Awesome, yes, okay.
To reconsider.
Perfect, I thought.
What's already been passed by.
Awesome, sorry for the miscommunication there.
The geniuses in Springfield has already been passed by the geniuses in Springfield.
So, we're, we can file your recommendation, and we'll probably go with the opt-out. Alderman Walker, yes?
City manager, can you just go back to what you were talking about, about what do you recommend again?
Because there's too much going on.
Yeah, there's the like. Well, we just don't know. I, I guess I'll defer to the council. In this case, I, I would just stand by what's on the agenda.
Which is opting out, yep. All right, roll call, please.
McAdams?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
Zaza?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
6I.
So opting out of ordinance 2023-056 passed. Can we just, should we, should we leave it, or?
You have to. If you want to opt out, you got to do it before the end of the year.
Okay, so then I would take a motion to waive second reading of opting out. Okay, we know what we're talking about. Alderman Larson, and then Alderman Walker, seconded. Any questions or comments on that? Roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zaza?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Abstain.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
6I.
All right, second reading has been waived, ordinance 2023-056, which means we opted out. And we will review this further going forward. All right, the next two agenda items are kind of together, and just before I forget, we do have Mark Eddington, who's the executive director of the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District. I don't know if that's the right title or not, Mark, but it sounds important. He's here, as well as Dr. Collins, who's president of the board, and then their attorney, Mark Strauss, is also here. So we have plenty of subject matter experts, should any additional questions come up. But with that, I would take a motion to bring ordinance 2023-057, approving the annexation of certain property located at 830 West Fairview, Kishawaki Water Reclamation District, to the floor, please.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Larson. City manager?
There are two pieces of this. This particular ordinance before you identifies the one parcel that's not annexed that would otherwise be rezoned, and would be rezoned under the next ordinance. And this is known as the South Slope. It's about 21 acres, and it's, it's in keeping with the intergovernmental agreement that was approved between the city and the KWARD back in October, a year ago, that there would be a common zoning, and so with the, the support of our city planner and the administration of the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District has proceeded to do just that and fulfill this piece of that, that agreement, and that's why it's before you tonight.
Counsel, questions or comments?
I do, I have a few questions, if you could.
Probably you, Mark.
Yeah. Thanks, Mark. So I've followed this on the, in planning and zoning when it went through there, and I just want one clarification. So, do you guys have any, any plans for this? And then I know that everything's subject to change, but is there anything?
We have no plans for this site. There has been some, since planning and zoning, there was some kind of misconceptions online that we had.
There are some bad actors out there that are spreading some.
I'll just say, there can be confusion when we talk about our two-south properties. This south property, the 21 acres that we're annexing in, we have no designs at all for this property right now, certainly not to construct a treatment plant in the future there. We do have property about 50 acres south of the tollway, on Harvest Drive.
Kidney corner across, right?
Yeah, so other, so south of the tollway, you're flipping through, there you go. This is a site that the district bought about 12 years ago, well, 13, I'm getting older, 13 years ago. With the idea that if development really kind of exploded south of the tollway, this, this property checked all the boxes as far as attributes that we'd need to locate a future wastewater treatment plant. Again, when I say future, this would be decades in the future, even with the development south of the tollway going on right now.
What you're really doing is more strategic, where you're looking ahead and saying, "If I look out into the crystal ball and everything keeps going the way it's going, we want a plan for growth", you know?
Exactly right. And the property was cheap 13 years ago, so we, we tried to make that the best deal possible at the time.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Zaza?
So you're thinking like 10, 20, 30 years, is what you're thinking?
Well, I'll give you some perspective.
Well, I'll give you some perspective. Our current property at thirteen oh one Sycamore Road, we, we're rated at nine million gallons a day of capacity. Currently, we see five million gallons a day of capacity. So we're running, I don't know, say sixty percent of our site's capacity as it stands today. Now, our site can be increased, you know, without purchasing any property or changing anything outside of our boundaries now at thirteen oh one Sycamore Road. That site can be doubled from nine MGD to eighteen MGD. So, you know, our goal would not to be to run...
Million gallons a day?
I'm sorry?
MGD is million gallons a day?
Yes, sorry. It's fucking lingo. But our goal would not to be to run two different treatment plants unless we absolutely positively had to. So our, our goal would be to treat as much sewage as we can at this site before ever really looking to that south of the tollway site.
Thank you.
So it could be fifty to a hundred years.
Any other comments or questions?
I like that long-term planning.
Awesome, yeah. Anything else, city manager? Alright, appreciate it, Mark. Alright, hearing no other comments or questions, I take, or roll call please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zaza?
Yes.
Larson? Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two three dash zero five seven.
Number three, ordinance two zero two three dash zero five eight approving the rezoning of parcels owned by the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District to the GS Government Sanitary District. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Zaza?
Yes.
Larson? Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two three dash zero five seven.
Number three, ordinance two zero two three dash zero five eight approving the rezoning of parcels owned by the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District to the GS Government Sanitary District. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Walker, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
Thank you, mayor. And there's quite a lot of detail here, just spelling out what the parcels are, but the one that you've just been talking about and six more are included here. So all the parcels within the control of the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District are included here and detailed. And the purpose here is to rezone all of them to GS Government Sanitary District. That's what we determined would be the best way to approach this in the intergovernmental agreement a year ago and I think that's still sound judgment and we recommend your approval.
This is really dotting our eyes and crossing our teeth, like we've been doing on so many other things. Yeah, just getting our house in order, so.
It is. It's also consistent with the idea that we're, this is a collaborative and a self-created organization here which does very good work and shines a light on the best practices, so.
It has for many, many years. Any other comments or questions? Alright, hearing none, roll call please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zaza?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Second reading has been waived.
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 Yes.[1341.58]